Today is Tuesday, September 17th. It's six o'clock in the evening and this is a regular meeting of the State Council of the City of Trinidad. Will you all please rise for the American Legion's.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of the citizens of all.
Good evening and thank you for coming tonight. Just as a friendly reminder, turn off your cell phones and take your hats off if you have them. Thank you. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Devono.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Airman.
Trill.
Here.
Ogletre.
Williamson.
Here.
Creago.
Here.
Item number two, approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any corrections to the agenda? No? I need a motion to approve.
One more.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Williamson.
Yes.
Devono.
Yes.
Ogletre.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Trill.
Yes.
Item number three, policy items and staff reports. We have a report from Detective Sergeant Jennifer Lay on information for the Coalition for the Young House. And her bodyguard, Pastor.
I told her I was here to make her look good.
You did a good job.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Jennifer Lay. This is Pastor Clay Mason. We're part of your Coalition for the Young House for Los Angeles and Werfino County. And I'm just going to read part of a press release that we're going to be putting out here shortly. The Los Angeles and Werfino County Coalition for the Young House is excited to announce its award of the two-year grant from the Community Solutions International. This vital funding will support the establishment of the Systems Coordinator position, which will be dedicated to address homelessness across Los Angeles and Werfino Counties. As both counties face growing challenges related to homelessness, the need for a coordinated effort has never been more urgent. The Systems Coordinator will lead a comprehensive strategy to reduce homelessness by optimizing resources, enhancing collaboration among local stakeholders, and implementing evidence-based solutions. The Systems Coordinator will be crucial in uniting local governments, nonprofit, healthcare providers, and community members to build a shared vision for reducing homelessness in Southern Colorado. The position will focus on expanding efforts to afford, I'm sorry, expanding access to affordable housing, enhancing supportive services, and leveraging data-driven initiatives for long-term solutions. The funding provided through the Built-for-Zero Case Investment Grant will enable the Coalition to begin recruiting for the Systems Coordinator in the next few days. For more information about the position, we'll be posting that and they can reach out to Marcy Keys with Keep Trinidad Safe or if there's any questions about the Coalition for the Young House, they can reach out to me. By bringing together local organizations, government agencies, and community members, the Coalition is working towards substantial solutions for individuals and families experiencing homelessness. Securing the Community Solutions International grant marks a pivotal step in turning that vision into a reality. So we'll all stand for any questions, but we just wanted to let you know that when we came just a few weeks ago to tell you that we're going to apply for the grant, we did get approved, so we'll move forward.
Mr. Williamson, do you have any questions? Do you have anything to add?
No, I'm pleased with where we're at. I really am. You know, we started this group just a little over a year ago. And my mind's eye, it's time it's come. And the group is, we were talking about this just yesterday, our group is very cohesive, working together, the camaraderie there, we seek to find the solutions for not just in Los Angeles County, but Werfino County as well. As she pointed out, the problem with homelessness is an ever-increasing one. Just reading reports from last year, as I recall, the increase in homelessness in Colorado went up 39% in the last year. But I think we're working towards, and I know we have good plans and good ideas, and we're working towards a very cohesive solution for both counties.
If I could piggyback on what Pastor Clay said, we had an executive team meeting yesterday and the feeling in the room was one of joy. People were excited. They want to, we want to post this position right away. We already have a job description. So I think things are going to start happening really fast, which is super exciting. And it was just a really, it was a great meeting, honestly. And I don't usually say that about me, but still, I was saying that.
So there was an application process for the Systems Coordinator and is it a paid position? Yes?
It is a paid position. There will be an application process. We're posting the job description in the coming days. And they will be, they will be asked to go through Marcy Keys with Keep Trinidad Safe. That's who the grant funding is through.
Okay.
Mr. Williamson.
No questions there.
Mr. Trill.
I don't have any questions. Just thank you for your dedication and your hard work. It is very, very much appreciated all the way around. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You want no question? Thank you again for doing what you do. Appreciate it.
Sorry.
That's all right. You have to stay fifteen minutes.
Do you have any idea where this person will get housed in terms of office? Yes, so KTS will house when they're in Los Angeles County. And then the county, Werfino, has given them a sliver of an office somewhere in the county. So Robert Gilbert got that set up on the Werfino County side because we have representation on our executive team from Werfino County. Yes.
Is the person going to have one telephone number, kind of contact, so that that...
So all of those details haven't been worked out. We're going to post the job. We're going to have to work with whomever the team decides to select for it. The good thing is, is we already have interest in this position. We set the salary pretty well for this area, I think. And so I don't think we'll have any trouble building it.
Good.
But we're going to have to work out that kind of detail with the person.
Thanks to you and all of the people in this team, you've done an excellent job. And it's just so heartening to see something happening.
It's been a long time coming.
Yes.
But I think at the end of the day, this will be a reflection on both counties, both cities, and all of the surrounding communities that there's this light shining in Southern Colorado that will reflect on the rest of the state. But if we can do it, they can too.
Speaking of the county, is the county involved in this at all?
So this morning, I went to the Commissioners meeting, myself and Pastor Clay did. We just signed up for their communications portion, so there wasn't a whole lot of opportunity to have any substantive communication with the Commissioners. But they are aware of the grant and wanted to know when the next large group meeting was. And now I have one of the Commissioners already on the mail list. So we informed them of our next large meeting, which is going to be November 14th at 1:30.
Okay.
And as it gets closer, Natalie from the Balance of State Continuum of Care is going to send out a meeting. We'll see what we can do.
I can't tell you. I think I'm free and we're happy to see her today.
I think it was him.
I beg to differ. I think it was him.
People don't like the cops coming to their houses.
Okay, people, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for yourself.
Thank you. Item number four, petitions or communications oral or written. The, this segment of the agenda is limited to five minutes per speaker. Please be respectful, not only of council and staff, but the audience. Mr. Downs is going to be our official timekeeper and we will give you one minute advance warning when you only have one minute left. We won't leave you dangling there without being able to finish your responses. Richard Mestes. Hi, Doc.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Rick Mestes, the City Manager for Raton. And I am here to remind you about saving the date for the Summit of Governments that we are having in Raton on the 17th of October at the Raton Convention Center. This is really our first opportunity that we could start thinking regionally as an interstate power and start looking at bringing different commerce, different industries, especially with the addition of Interstate 27 that will be coming within the next decade. And, you know, there's a lot happening and I, you know, Raton, we're far away from San Fede, you guys are far away from Denver. And I think if we start thinking and acting regionally, there will be a lot of opportunities for us. The city, Los Angeles County, Colfax County, and Raton have already partnered on the Department of Transportation Grant. So, you know, we're already working towards, you know, starting to do these things. But if you won't mind, I would just like to pass out these reminders real quick to the council.
Thank you. Good evening.
And again, this is just a reminder.
Thank you.
See you.
Thank you. And again, I appreciate your time. It's always good to see my biology teacher up here, so. Oh, my God. But I appreciate your time and I strongly encourage as many of you as can come to this Summit of Governments, it'd be really great for all the governments to start talking to each other. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mestes. Bill Phillips.
I brought a looking along.
Pardon?
I brought a looking down.
I think that was in the studio.
Basically, what we would like to do tonight is to ask you if you would write a letter of support to the Los Angeles Veterans Council. And the reason for that is that we are going for some substantial grants and the wider the support base is for what we are doing, better chance we have of getting grants if you could. Bill has the letter which we'll pass out and it does spell out some of the work that we're doing. You'll recall that about six years ago, we were successful in getting the county to sign a put flag deed and hand it over for Fort to the Los Angeles Veterans Council. Sometimes you wonder if you really want what you've asked for. Because we ended up with 31,000 square feet of real estate and two grand in the bank, it wasn't enough to do hardly anything, let alone even just pay our utilities. However, we've survived six years. We've got a number of things established on a permanent basis. The American Legion has its own place within the fort. DLR also. We've rented out some other spaces. We have, one of the small forts has been dedicated to veterans who land up in Trinidad having run out of money and ideas. And we house them and feed them and for a few days until they get back on their feet and sort of come into some other new direction in their lives. So that's working. We have two people over there at the moment. And the number of things that have happened for veterans over that period of time have been substantial in that we're involved in psychological treatment within the town for vet pets with PTSD. That's working well. We have hearing loss. We have dental. We have worked with veterans who've reached the age where they have to get involved in Medicare, Medicaid, and counseling for that process, which is complicated if anyone's been through it. But it's all helpful. But all of those are social things, but we need the money to keep the fort upright. And that's what the grant's for. We've done a lot of work in the time we've been there. And so it's up, it's running, it's involved with a lot of people. And there's a lot of things happening for vets that only happen since we've taken ownership. And it's a bit like the old baseball thing. If you build it, they will come. And that's exactly what has happened. And so we're going from strength to strength. Now we're focusing on bricks and mortar.
Just a quick on the state historic grants. We did a HSA back in 2020. That was a $25,000 grant. In the spring of this year, we did another grant, which we received for $65,000, that is to do the construction documents for the first phase of Holloway Hall. And this is the October 1st grant, which we're looking at a competitive grant for around $200,000 to $250,000 in order to shore up the structure from a structural standpoint, make sure the roof is good, make sure the drainage is good. One minute, you guys, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Forgive me. And that's about a, we're looking at probably two rounds on the structure and then we'll start working on the interior and stuff. So we'll probably back again and push it on the status. So, and we, as Los Angeles County Veterans Council, are putting the match in front. We did $15,000 for the HSA. We had $17,000 for the construction documents and we'll be putting $50,000 of our own money in for this one. And as you all know, we sold some property that the city purchased from us, so you're helping us. And we appreciate everything you have done. I'm going to pass you over. Thank you.
Mr. Valentine, who would you go for in staff?
I've got to decipher that. My question to the gentleman is, what's the deadline? When do you need this?
You guys speak on the 20th. And I've got some sample letters here.
Is that for us?
That's right.
Thank you.
The 20th of September. The grant is due, we'll be putting the application in the first of October.
Yeah.
I just catch them?
I don't bear.
We can write it for you.
Well, I guess with council's consent, we'll put a letter together and get it out there.
And we were with the county Commissioners, also for the letters, support this. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Frank Osseto wants to speak about needs.
Coming slow.
That's okay. We've got a lot of time to talk.
Can I ask Bobby Justin?
Pardon?
Bobby Justin. Work back there.
Well, it's not customary. This is your time.
All right. Last week, I was kind of upset. In front of my house, I have a ditch and we don't know what to city driveway. I mean, it's all messed up in that area. And I have Chinese yams growing in it. And I've always taken care of them for the last 44 years, but this year I'm injured. Can't bend over, can't sit down and stuff. So I kind of went down and I was asking Bobby and he said it was a city driveway. It was up to us to take care of it. I've taken care of it for 45 years, my knee or hand eye. And so he said we would have to find out and this and that. So anyhow, he did. We finally, we got them cut last week, last weekend and that. And the city did it. They did a great job. And I was really mad at Bobby. I was going to, that's one of the reasons I'm here, but I'm apologizing for it. But we still have the Chinese yams there. And I asked one of the workers about getting them cut out. And they said that the city don't give them any, any stuff to cut them with. We have those yellow cutters. That's how I cut them out. But I can't bend over no more and stuff. So I just wanted to apologize to Bobby. And then I wanted Bobby to tell his workers to get some tools, because I guess he, he said they don't have any tools and parts and racks. And then at the end of Navajo Street, the rapaho, that's behind me, we got a, we haven't seen the streets up two hours over there. We've got rattle all over. I used to have my tractor and go there and pick them all up and I'd go put them in there. I made my own ditch, I made my own drainage, I made my own culvers and never asked for nothing. But just since like the last couple of years, we've kind of got screwy on everybody. And so I have mine, but everybody else down the road. But then the other thing too, the Chinese yams keep growing. The sewer lines right underneath. And I did flood it out a couple of times. So, but the city sewer and everybody's been working with this so great on it. And the last couple of years, I haven't been able to chomp it. That's all I wanted to do is see if they could just chomp it down, ground level, and then get some of the poison and just poison that. And like I said, I was really mad at Bobby last week and it was just a heart-headed thing. I'm used to working, I mean, I love Trinidad, this is my city. I've taken care of, I've taken care of the streets. I put a curb and gutted down stone wall and all that new development. So he'd come around and I'd borrow their poison and I'd put poison between the street and all that and have it eat. And the last couple of years, I'm going downhill with my health, so I can't do anything. And that's all I really wanted to ask. And it's resolved now, most of it. But I need the yams out of there because we're running on the sewer line and if we want that problem, I'm going to first let them come back up again. But I oversee because I, but I know how to take care of it. I mean, I don't expect my neighbors to know or, they're not plumbers or they're not, it's always pop the manhole right there and get shoes and I fill it out. And I called Vance and called down and everybody works with us. I mean, everybody's been great, but like I said, the last couple of years, my health is kind of giving me fits. So, but it's, and then we paid, when I found out, I hired somebody to do it, my friend, and I paid $50 last week to have it done. And then right after that, we couldn't do the rest.
One minute, sir. I'm sorry. One minute remaining.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, good. Sorry.
No, no, that's it.
Everybody needs to be right.
I just wanted to thank you for getting mad and angry and we got it done as well. If we could just clean up, we would appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Valentine, you've got it noted, I see.
Yeah. Also by Friday, please.
Tleefi Gillespie wants to speak on pedestrian safety.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Tleefi Gillespie and I am a pedestrian. I walk to get around. I even walked in the rain from downtown to Mike's retirement dinner. And I have, I have to say that Trinidad is mostly really great for walking. The river, the flowers on Main, proximity of grocery stores and job opportunities. What isn't great is the pedestrian signal 200 feet from here on Main and Angeles. I believe that it is currently dangerous for pedestrians. I believe a pedestrian may be hit by turning traffic from just one corner, just in one direction, walking northeast from Main Street Cannabis, the northwest corner. The only time pedestrians are given the illuminated symbol of a walking person, symbolizing that it is safe to walk, is when the left arrow is given to people coming off I-25, going east on Main. When the left turn signal disappears and both directions on Main are given the green circle, the upraised hand is illuminated, symbolizing don't walk. Now, this is a new programming as a traffic engineer came down this month to fix the previous issue that I brought up to the Power and Light Superintendent and the Public Works Director. Previously, the walking person was never illuminated. But the upraised hand did disappear, which made it seem like folks could cross safely. I appreciate that Power and Light changed it, that they tried to fix it, but I never imagined they could make it worse. I appreciate that they even put up a sign this month, turning vehicles yield to pedestrians because they could recognize the conflict and that it was an issue. However, I don't think the sign registers when you have a green arrow. And I know the green arrow didn't print out very bright, so I apologize for that. But the sign doesn't really register when you're given the green light. I mean, how many people turn right on commercial? There's a sign there. So what I'm saying now is that it is worse, even with the sign. It got more dangerous after being reprogrammed this month. What I'm asking for is an easy fix to make it safer by design, to switch it to the correct programming that you see at three other viewpoints in that same intersection. I also request that it's turned off again until it can be corrected. And so I'm going to go over that second sheet of paper. The first one is a drawing of the conflict that might happen, although not as fearsome as it probably could have been. So I'll try to explain what is currently programmed and is dangerous and what I'm requesting it be changed to. So previously, during the turn arrow, there was no illumination, but that the upraised hand disappeared. They changed it currently to the pedestrian is illuminated and the left turn arrow simultaneously. So the current programming of where Main Street Cannabis is, also then when it changes to green circles in both directions on Main, pedestrians are given the illuminated hand, don't walk, when it is safe to walk. They're told not to walk. When it's unsafe, they are told to walk. And you can see that the two corners have different programming. So when cars are turning left when they're given that green arrow and you're standing in front of Penny's Building, the pedestrians are given the hand, don't walk, which is good. You don't want, you don't want that conflict.
One minute.
And when they're given the signal, it is when it's safe to walk. So I'm just requesting that the way that it's programmed from Penny's Building, west, be how it's programmed from Main Street Cannabis, east. This would eliminate the conflict and give pedestrians more time to cross because currently they're only given a few seconds right as cars are turning. And this will make it safer for both pedestrians and those driving. If this pedestrian signal stays how it is currently programmed, I believe a pedestrian may be hit by turning traffic. So it's up to you to either vote, to either keep it as it is or choose... They changed it currently to the pedestrian is illuminated and the left turn arrow simultaneously. So the current programming of where Main Street Cannabis is, also then when it changes to green circles in both directions on Main, pedestrians are given the illuminated hand, don't walk, when it is safe to walk. They're told not to walk. When it's unsafe, they are told to walk. And you can see that the two corners have different programming. So when cars are turning left, when they're given that green arrow, and you're standing in front of Penny's Building, the pedestrians are given the hand, don't walk, which is good. You don't wanna, you don't want that conflict.
One minute, yeah.
And when they're given the signal, it is when it's safe to walk. So I'm just requesting that the way that it's programmed from Penny's Building west, be how it's programmed from Main Street Cannabis east. And this would eliminate the conflict and give pedestrians more time to cross, because currently they're only given a few seconds right as cars are turning. And this will make it safer for both pedestrians and those driving. If this pedestrian signal stays how it is currently programmed, I believe a pedestrian may be hit by turning traffic. So, it's up to you to either vote, to either keep it as it is or choose to make this town a safer place. Also, please vote now to spend any twenty thousand dollars on a honor of feasibility study. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You got that, Mike?
Got that.
Item number five.
Bring more. There, I'd like to make a motion to amend the approved agenda under item nine miscellaneous business, part D, to include discussion for a letter of support to Los Angeles County Veterans Council for WUU Veterans Memorials, where?
Can we change the agenda now?
That's kind of adding an item of business that wasn't posted for twenty-four hours.
Okay, if that's.
I'm sorry.
If that's not, uh.
It's really not kosher, I, I'm sorry.
Understood.
Okay, okay.
Motion, I'll retract the motion.
Thank you.
Item five is council reports. If you remember, the past month, council has requested that our reports be included in the main section of the meeting, because up until this point, we've been giving our council reports to an empty room. So, let's see if it works out this way. We're hoping that we get better results. Ms. Doe first?
Sure. Arts and Culture, that was passed Thursday, and they, they're getting a lot of good responses to the Rappaho bench. And they'd like to do more like that, or some other kind of whimsical design. So they're gonna come to council eventually to request some money to do that. But I think people are enjoying that a lot, and they enjoy putting it together. And then I attended the Golf Association meeting on Wednesday last week. And the only thing that's pertinent from the city point of view is that the Golf Association would like to have a work session with council to talk about what the agreement may be next year. And then I also spoke with Mr. Valentine about that. And he's going to pursue talking with him directly first before we do that, so that the staff can nail it down, its own concerns. But progress is being made. And then, let's see, today, I won't talk about this a lot, because the mayor was there and Alan Williamson was there. But we had, as a follow-up to something I brought up the last term, and council reports that the college wants to have a greater integration with the city in terms of economic development. And what's really important right now is that they are opening up the Emergent Campus, which is a very exciting business draw incubator. And so we talked through a lot of those issues with Dr. Epper and Christine Lawton, who was there, who's the director of the Emergent Campus. And also bringing in, focusing on the youth of the city, so that they get a vision for what kind of careers they could build here in Trinidad, through the high school and the college. And that was very encouraging.
That was very. That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Eli?
Well, the Veterans, the Los Angeles Veterans Council already did a presentation on the letter of support for WUU. So, that's, we heard that a few minutes ago.
Frank?
Our meeting, the guys from J and K Energy Consultants that are doing the rate changes and that were there. They presented three scenarios for the rate change. They chose a number three, like, it's kind of hard to go through all that with everything. But it isn't official, they will decide on the October, finalize in the December meeting. The savings are, right now, listed, but there's an issue with San Isabelle rate increase. Don't know what that's gonna be. And also the transmission lines are having, Tri-State, we're having an issue with them. For, don't know if the rate's gonna go up or down, but it'll probably go up, because it never goes down. But, like I said, I do have the rate changes, but there's no use banking on them until we get the final decision from San Isabelle and the other groups. But it would be pretty substantial rate increase, but again, decreased, yeah. Yeah. But again, that's, but again, the question is seven years ago. So we'll find out here in the next couple of weeks. And same consultants to our gas rate, John, I can't pronounce his name, but he's, uh, seems to be real sharp in getting stuff done and that. So, we will have that back in the October meeting, pretty much what we're gonna do. And then the final will be decided in December. So, kind of looking forward to maybe decreasing something instead of increasing stuff. And that's it.
All right, sir, thank you. Mr. Treble?
Been a busy little week. So, last week, History of Colorado, I've come down and they have requested community, a community input group on a potential Hispanic heritage museum coming somewhere in Colorado. And so it was more of a discovery, but it was a great time. It was a great collaboration of, it was a good turnout. So a good collaboration of stories and laughter and Yolanda was, we had a great time. And Mr. Grego and Commissioner Lopez was also there amongst other participants. So it was, it was a good exchange of ideas and potential, and we did try to lobby for our region. So hopefully that is a potential. Second of all, I got to participate in the Chili Festival. And I wanted to thank Mike and Yolanda Romero for throwing on a great event and the rest of the Hispanic Chamber. These community events really do bring out our community and bring them together. The addition this year, the Folklore de Co dancers, I've gotten so many compliments on that, and I wanted to pass it on to you, Ms. Romero. That was a great addition to expressing our heritage and our history. Also, our Main Street Board meeting, we had a discussion concerning Alié, where we were at on that. When are we gonna be brought to the table on that and come forward with that? Also, questions that they had, their concerns was on their, where they're at on being able to get their accreditation. So that might be something we might wanna touch base with the Main Street Board on that. And pretty much that was about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Williamson.
I'm sort of in between meetings right now. Coming up though, we will have a council of governments meeting, some important developments there. I've mentioned it before, but I just want to mention it quickly. We are proceeding with building a new transportation barn here in Trinidad that will allow us to increase regional services. I think that'll be great for our, specifically our town and the region at large. So, that's exciting. Secondly, the staff meeting that the executive director of COG attends, they've continued to lobby for legislative solution to the combined, combining of our transportation regional zones here, the TPR in Southern Colorado, that continues to move forward. It looks, if you, if one was an optimistic person, I would say they would call it likely that the areas may not be combined, which will be an important win for our community and allocation of Colorado Department of Transportation dollars for maintenance of state, right away in highways. So, I mean, we'll just have to keep our fingers crossed in that regard. Ms. Councilwoman Ogletree mentioned that he was at the college today and able to tour that. And that was a real treat, I would say. It's amazing what the, what the college is doing, and it's a gargantuan undertaking. And if I remember right, it should, should be in November that everything is, is ready. But I think a particular note is, they've really done a fantastic job of modernizing the library, making it a very inviting space, a space that's going to be usable for the community at large. They have a maker space, which in my mind, I mean, if there's entrepreneurs, people in town, that can be a real game changer to test out their ideas, you know, get at least early prototypes built. And that's going to be available to community members. I think it's going to be a real draw for new students and hopefully integrate with, you know, future economic endeavors that we all undertake together. And to that end, I just want to tack on the request for an economic development work session. And, you know, obviously that's a huge scope, so I think that needs to be given some important thought to determine what that is. I mean, hopefully, we have a long-range plan, a mid-range plan, and there has to be some sort of low-hanging fruit that we can implement easily that will help our current economic status. One particular idea potentially is already electric car charges at the new hotel by the river. But if we have space anywhere available, like behind, and obviously the building owners would need to be contacted, but potentially the market, if we could have car charging stations there, I mean, people choosing between a truck stop to charge their Tesla or historic downtown area to charge a Tesla. I mean, hopefully, if you take that option, I think it's an easy option to take. And then, I have capital on it, it's far in our, but just a few ideas and comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Treble. I have, I also was at that meeting with the ED of the Emergent Campus. I toured that facility last week as well, they had their first opening house. I believe it was Thursday, I can't remember. But anyway, what has come, what came out of that meeting today in addition to us being able to see with the library is the renovations of the library. What's, I think, probably more important than that is that we don't have a cohesive economic development organization within the city right now. So Christine Lawton is in charge of Emergent Campus. She just found out that Amanda Corff is in charge of Small Business Development Center. We're trying to get those two organizations together to be able to work off of each other's resources. But we are mentioned today because the city, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Valentine, but the city doesn't have one person contact within this building for anybody that calls for business.
What, we do, usually it's through planning and Nick, he's our Development Services and Planning Director. And then he, he gets us, the team together, we have a weekly Development Services meetings and kind of brings it forth. That's the way it's happening now, since I've come back on board. So, so we can direct them to Nick. I mean, calls that come in, he has had several opportunities and stuff that we discussed.
I think those of us that were there today think it's a good idea if we develop the Economic Development Committee, including the college, including the Emergent Campus. And whoever, you know, will have to kind of decide who isn't gonna be an integral part of that. But that's what, pardon?
Are we having a discussion?
No, I'm just saying we're, we want to bring it to a work session. Yeah. That's the roundabout way of, we want to get it to a work session. I'm just trying to tell you what the mechanics were before we decided to do that. So, I am the liaison for the Logging Tax Advisory Board. And to give you some kind of reassurance that our strategic planning didn't go, I noticed that board is the first board that has, has gotten their marching orders, so to speak, to make decisions based on what our strategic plan was. It was, the chairman of the, the LTAAP was overwhelmed at first, but thankfully Cheryl came to the meeting, my things meeting, and I was there and we reassured them. One, one way or the other, we're gonna figure this. So that's, that's a good thing. Also, we talked about the white water, I, the white water, the white paper with the army and Pinyan Canyon. So I contacted my contact with the county commissioners, who is Louis Lopez. The army has committed to October eighth at ten o'clock at the county commissioner's meeting room. Dee, I've forgotten how to answer this. But she's the liaison for Fort Carson. She's committed to that. Kathy Garcia, who is the representative for Lauren Goldberg in this area, is going to be there. So I, it's, it's almost, it's important that as many city council people get there, so they can hear why this white paper is so beneficial to the, to the army. And I believe, did you all get the email from Mr. Doran County?
I looked there and they did not, I swear, I was gonna kind of report, but thank you.
Okay, this is what I'll do, I'll hand you it to you, and then you can.
I received it.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, add on, because I know I forgot something in that. And also, Sunday afternoon, I had a really unique experience. It's not really anything to give the city government per se, but we had a Scottish television crew here. And thank you to Jessica for doing that research, and thank you, Audra, for everything you did. So what we did, we had three, two camera people and a, I guess, the interviewer that was here and wanted to know about Murdo McKenzie. I know this might not be interesting, but I thought it was. So all his relatives and all the people back at his hometown in Scotland believed that he was once the mayor of Trinidad. So Audra and Jessica looked through. I mean, it's amazing, we have the handwritten notes from City Council, April of eighteen ninety-one. And I, we showed them in black and white. We're sorry, but Mr. McKenzie was never the mayor of Trinidad. He was important, he was important to the area, but he was never the mayor of Trinidad. So this segment, they interviewed me and asked me certain questions about how I felt his impact was in Trinidad. So that's gonna air in Scotland, so thank God you're not in Scotland. Because if I had to depend on my television personality and make a living, I'd be starving, so. But anyway, it was so interesting, because these people have come from an area that's very historic in their own right. They said after our meeting, I let them out of the building, making sure the building was secure, they stayed out front and took hundreds of pictures of this guy. They were just, they were, it was unreal how interested they were in that. Because they had, Mr. McKenzie was in Dallas. So they went to Dallas for three or four days, and then from Dallas they came to Trinidad. And they couldn't believe the difference between Dallas and Trinidad. So I, I think it's really interesting, and I'm going on about that, because I think it's interesting how small the world is, you know? So now I've got friends in Scotland that I talk to. And that's the end of my report. Item number six is the Consent Agenda Approval. Item six A is approval of the regular meeting minutes of September third, twenty twenty-four, and the special meeting minutes of September ninth, twenty twenty-four. Item B, approval of professional services agreement, broad call engineering services with Bolton and Mink Incorporated, Three Rocks Engineering, and Drexel Garell Inc. Approval of bills to the tune of one million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and eight cents. Item six D, approval of payroll from September fourteenth, twenty twenty-four through September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. through September 27th, 2024. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Sarah Center? Okay, call the vote, please.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trinhel?
Yes.
Debona?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Item seven A, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance repealing and reenacting Articles seven, eight, and eleven of Chapter Two Administration of the Trinidad Municipal Code. The hearing is now open. Anybody on council to speak for this? Anybody in the audience?
Mayor, if I could, please?
Yes, sir.
We do have a correction.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And no, and I, I just want to say that in the caption, it references, excuse me, articles, as you said, seven, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. And it should replace seven, eleven, thirteen, and fourteen, and fifteen should be omitted.
Fourteen added fifteen.
Yeah, and fourteen is in there, but it should be in fourteen, and fifteen should be omitted.
Okay. Fifteen should be in there?
Omitted, deleted, whatever.
So it's Article seven, eight, eleven, and fourteen?
Yes.
Article seven?
I'm sorry, seven, eleven, thirteen, and fourteen?
Thirteen.
And fourteen.
Let me repeat. Item seven A, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance repealing and reenacting Articles seven, eight, eleven, thirteen, and fourteen of Chapter Two Administration of the Trinidad Municipal Code. The hearing is now open. Anybody have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
On, okay, so this is very hard to follow because we're, we're getting rid of certain chapters and then adding things back in. And so I spent some time trying to look at what the current version is and trying to understand it. In, let's see. We have three versions of this ordinance, too, in front of the Senate. I think the one that's most, the first one that we see is one that's what it's going to be. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. In, let's see, under Article thirteen, section four, reenactment of Article thirteen is Article fourteen, Chapter two. Article thirteen currently is Agencies, Board, Bureaus, and Commissions. It says it's repealed and enacted as follows with renumbering of Sections two, five, seven only under Article fourteen. And then it goes on to say Article fourteen and just says Section two fifty-seven from Section two sixty point one. I, I just, that's a little vague to me to understand what's happening with that, with all of thirteen because thirteen covers, the Library Advisory Board is two, five, seven. There's a provision that allows the City Council to come up with other agencies, the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission, or Historic Man Street Board, and then there's a repealed section in there. But are all those remaining in the new version of this? We're just changing the numbering? Is that what that means? Yes. Okay. But they're, so they're not repealed, they're just being renumbered?
Correct. Those provisions, those programs, yes.
So I, I think that it's a little unclear because it does say that it's hereby repealed and enacted as follows with the renumbering of Sections two dash five seven only under Article fourteen. So that's just very confusing to me.
I understand. It, it's just those that are being modified would be repealed and replaced.
Okay, so Section two five seven becomes Section two sixty point one. And the two five nines, does it become, what section does it become? Does it just follow in ordering after two six zero point one? So what, so currently, we have under Article thirteen, there's one, two, or five different sections under Agencies, Board, Bureaus, and Commissions. Then there's only one that's mentioned on here as being renumbered. So I'm just curious what happened to two five nine.
Trinhel. Thank you, Audra. So this, this whole thing is not for because of the strategic plan and the realignment and trying to straighten this out, and I apologize. But Audra can help us with this.
Okay, so let's start over. And I'm sorry, originally, the ordinance that was presented at first reading had Article eight being changed to Development Services. So after more internal discussion, it was decided that the Library Board should, that the Library Department should remain its own department. So it was kind of a rework of the entire ordinance of, I shouldn't say a rework of the entire ordinance. It was putting Article eight back in, leaving it back in as the Library Department. But that meant then reworking ordinance and moving sections. Otherwise, they're going to move a department underneath a portion of the code. It just didn't make sense. So to your points, though, you're correct. So Article thirteen, I understand what you're saying, that it sounds incorrect to say it's repealed and reenacted. I guess it should say repealed and enacted as, and it does say enacted as follows. It has Article fourteen down further, further. And it should include, oh. I have to think about this for a moment. I think when, that was done previously. The twenty point six one, and I don't have that section in front of me, but that is one of the boards that will ultimately remain intact as it is. Because again, as part of strategic plan, City Council is going to be combining boards by the end of the year. They'll be combining arts, parks, and mains, I think it's Main Street. Arts, parks, and urban forestry. And which actually fits really nicely with our rework because the director of the Parks and Recreation and Community Enhancement will actually oversee parks. They'll coordinate with the arts and, what was the third aspect of it? Urban forestry, obviously, the landscape. So that works out nicely and it coincides nicely with our rework to have the Parks and Recreation and Community Services Department. So we're going to move them sometime later. But in the meantime, we just repealed, we repealed. As far as I can tell, the only one that remains is the Library Advisory Board.
Yeah, we probably better not do that. I was thinking way too far ahead because they need to do an ordinance that's separate to do that. In the interim, though, we, because this is all supposed to happen by the end of the year, we're not filling seats on those boards that are supposed to be combined because that ordinance needs to rework that whole board, all of those boards into just a couple. So, so what do we do with this?
Well, we should probably amend this ordinance to leave those boards in there so that they can function until the combined boards are formed. And I apologize. I was thinking way far ahead.
That's okay.
It's three months ago. Any other questions? It, like I said, it was a little convoluted to keep things where, where they needed to be.
You then. Questions?
No. No. So we, we don't need that conversation?
I'm sorry?
We're not acting on this?
You tabled this?
Yeah. We got, do you want to?
Table on a table?
Well, what is your recommendation?
Well, you can amend on second reading and include those sections back in under Article fourteen, twenty point six, is it six one through? I don't have it coming for me. I'll have it next.
I mean, I'd like to make a motion to table until we have that cleared.
Close the hearing.
That's fine.
And then we'll have spring motion.
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay, let's think that. I think that would be better.
It might be a lot clearer.
Yeah, I was just, thank you, ma'am.
And I have, you know, it's something really strange. On my packet, I have a working copy of that with edits on it.
Okay, so that's because we were trying to highlight what the changes were from first reading to second reading. So first reading, we had the original ordinance that called out Article eight as, as being repealed. So to highlight what the changes were, they're actually highlighted in there. And there was a memo that went out from the City Manager that said.
Where were those highlights?
Right. It said, here's the proposed changes to the ordinance. We're going to leave Article eight down there. It's just very confusing.
No, we're not matching. That's what we're trying to do. No.
You have the same.
Can you approach? Can we ask you to approach?
But if you're going to table anyhow, let's just go ahead and table. We'll present the pending version. We've explained, we've explained everything verbally. I hope if you have any questions, please ask now so that it's not more confusion next time. And again, I apologize.
Because I'm.
No, no, it's not time sensitive.
Okay, anybody in the audience speak for this?
I'm surprised.
Hearing is closed. Item eight, seven, eight, one, second reading of an ordinance repealing and reenacting Article seven, eight, eleven, thirteen, and fourteen, Chapter Two Administration of the Trinidad Municipal Code. I mean, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to table this until it's through amendments.
Sarah Center?
Center.
Call the vote, please. Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Debona?
Yes.
Trinhel?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Item seven B, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance, repealing and reenacting Section two dash eighteen one, Administrative Officers' Departmental and Personnel Charts of Chapter Two Administration of the Trinidad Municipal Code. The hearing is now open. Ms. Williamson?
Since Audra presented.
Since you're involved in all this and there was need to come in, I'll let you.
The two things that this ordinance would accomplish is identifying the Director of Parks and Recreation and Community Enhancement as, as an officer and the National Gas Department Director as an officer. However, since you've tabled the previous ordinance that would establish the Parks and Recreation and Community Enhancement Department, I would recommend that you table this one as well.
Thank you. Okay, the hearing is closed. Item seven B, one, second reading of an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section two dash eighteen one, Administrative Officers' Departmental and Personnel Charts, Chapter Two Administration of the Trinidad Municipal Code. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to table this.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Call the vote, please. Trinhel?
Yes.
Debona?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Item seven C, public hearing for consideration of ordinance repealing and reenacting Article ten of Chapter Two Administration Municipal Utility Department of the Trinidad Municipal Code. The hearing is now open.
So with this one, as, as Audra was going through all these and we were trying to redefine everything, we found that, you know, these departments weren't really identified. So this one identifies those departments, the power light, the water, and the natural gas, and the sewer. So it cleans up code and adds those departments into the code.
That's amazing. All right. Mr. Williamson, do you have any questions?
I have no question.
I have none?
No.
No, of course.
So the sewer wasn't in, the sewer was added to?
Well, the sewer was a department, but now the sewer is outsourced, sort of. It's still our utility, but somebody else manages it.
Anybody in the audience to speak for or against? The hearing is closed. Item seven C, one, second reading of an ordinance repealing and reenacting Article ten of Chapter Two Administration Municipal Utility Department of the Trinidad Municipal Code. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. Shu?
Yes.
Debona?
Yes.
Trinhel?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Item eight, unfinished business, there is none. Item nine, eight, consideration of a special event application for malt vinos and spiriturists filed by Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and two more at this Main Street. Who's going to present that information?
You're, should. I'm happy to go up and help.
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't know I had to make the presentation, but.
So Mayor members of council, the Rad Fest is coming up at the end of September. And in the past couple of years, they've, they have had corporate sponsor for, that has a beer. And they have asked that a nonprofit be the vendor to distribute that product. So in the past, it was the Chamber of Commerce. This year, we suggested that they pick a different nonprofit. They can rotate that. The organization will, they'll compensate them for, you know, doing, doing that. The beer is served gratuitously, but the Chamber obviously has, they have the responsibility of ensuring they're still being responsible in the service of it. This special event location will be inside of the entire area that will be the Alcohol Beverage Festival permitted area. And for your information, there's three vendors that are participating. It went out to all of the licensees. Three decided that they wanted to participate today. So it'll be confined essentially to the Midas Memorial Area and the Main Street Area where it's blocked. So, and there'll be paid security, paid by lifetime fitness. I know that you know that this is a very well-organized, well-thought-out event. And in fact, we have another meeting with the organization tomorrow. We'll go over all of those logistics one more time. And Yolanda did submit also her own safety plan. I didn't get it in the packet, but it's essentially the same plan that they have with all of their events, that they ensure they're not over-serving, that they will make sure identifications are proper and that there are a, those sorts of things.
Yeah, no questions?
No.
No questions?
I have no questions.
Thank you. So the Rad is going to provide the answer. Thank you. So, the RAB is gonna provide the alcohol and you just...
This corporate sponsor does, yes.
It's like a boulder, boulder, you run and get your...
The Chamber will actually be able to sell some of their own alcohol, although, but primarily, they're there to support the RAB in, um, serving that corporate sponsors here.
I have a, a, just a, a logistical question. So, when we usually get requests for, for any kind of liquor application, we have a report from the fire department and PD? We don't get them for this?
You would have, except that this is all part of the RAB. So, we're looking at it holistically instead of just focused on this one special event vendor. Because there's going to be this one plus three alcohol beverage...
Okay.
Licensees in that service area.
Okay, I understand.
And, and we saw it as an opportunity to, uh, raise monies, again, to assist in, uh, bail payment for the museum. Uh, you know, any funds, uh, that we raised there at that time will be used and donated, uh, to the Southern Colorado Coal Miners Memorial and Museum. So, um, we're going to do the best we can, you know, to operate. And I've been in, uh, contact with the lone, well, the museum charge, you know, of, of the best during that. And so, um, we'll also be meeting with her, uh, in another week to see what more we can do or how we coordinate efforts, um, you know, for the event to make it a nice event as well.
Thank you. Good luck.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. Debona?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trillo?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grago? Yes. Item nine B, consideration of a contract with Health Solutions Co-Responder Program for the Trinidad Police Department. Who's giving us information?
Um, Detective Lay is here, uh, but, uh, just this Detective Sergeant. Um, she'll come up and present it. It's my understanding and, and that you've heard of this before, the clinician and everything. You actually, uh, went out for a grant, or awarded the grant, um, received, uh, an agreement for DocuSign, and it's over, um, you allowed that for the city manager to sign, um, in the confusion of the switch over or something, um, it, it wasn't brought to council. So, Jen will come up, exciting, more exciting news from her, but, um, in the, uh, contract between Health Solutions and the city, there's some numbers that, uh, we're working through. Uh, it is, it's not available. It wasn't in your packet. We got it Friday night. Um, I apologize for that, but this is something that they're working through. They already have interest in the position. So, with that, I'll, I'll be quiet and let Jen come up.
I like that I get to come up and have all the good news.
Don't get used to it.
I will, I will. Um, I'll share with you, uh, just a fact sheet that came from the Behavioral Health Administration about the Co-Responder Program. But this is a a very exciting thing for the police department to be able to partner with Health Solutions to bring a program such like, uh, the Co-Responder to our area. We're modeling it after what Pueblo has done with their Co-Responder Program. Um, the Health Solutions has already been very successful there, um, creating the program with Pueblo PD. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about it. I know that we've, uh, presented to council before, um, about what it is. We're gonna be basing it on a primary response model, so that will be an officer that is paired with a clinician. And they will do, um, direct calls. So, uh, somebody can call into the police department, nine one one, or an admin line, and, and depending on what the call for service is, the dispatch will dispatch out the co-responder with the officer. So, we're doing a primary response model.
Uh, thank you for being here with this. Um, I may be misremembering this, but I thought there was, um, going to be, when we had the co-responder, there was going to be a need for a particular type of space to potentially bring someone in the event that they needed follow-up here, or is, is that the case? Did we have that, or am I misremembering?
No, I don't think you're misremembering. Um, Pueblo has that. They have a, a specific, they call it the living room area, um, where they're able to take people who are experiencing a mental health crisis with the clinician and the officer, or not the officer, depending on the situation, because everything is really unique. We don't necessarily have that. That's not something that we have to have, but we could eventually work towards that, and then we'll be able to utilize space at the offices here at Health Solutions if necessary.
Okay.
I mean, I think down the road, we can expand on this program, um, at the police department, but initially, just getting it off the ground is super exciting.
No, it's a really a good step forward. And, um, I've seen a lot of countrywide where this has really helped a lot of, a lot of people. So, um, thank you for doing it.
I, I mean, there's counties and cities all over the state of Colorado that are implementing this because they, they see the benefit.
Right. I have no further questions.
Okay.
I have no questions other than thank you for listening. Thank you. Jen, uh, the behavior of health specialists, is there any time where the primary response would not require, uh, an officer?
The clinician will always be paired with an officer.
And how, with the vicinity, how close will they be to be able to go to that call?
You know how Pastor Clay was standing here and there, I mean, that's how...
That's not close. Oh, wow.
So, they'll be riding in the...
It's not close enough.
That's close. They'll be riding in the same car, um, and, and I know there's times when, uh, the clinicians or the co-responders will get on scene and they'll assess the situation and, and they'll say, hey, give me a few feet, and the officer will back away, but they'll always be together.
So, the anger health specialist is just mediator, right? Pretty much.
No, they're, they're far more than just mediator. They're gonna be able to hook up people with, um, services on the ground. So, they'll also do, um, respond to calls, but then they'll also be able to have follow-up. They can do, um, self-initiated calls. So, if they're dragging around with the officer and they see somebody who's walking around with a plastic bag over their head or something, I don't know. They can say, hey, let's stop and talk to that person to see how they're doing. So, they can do self-initiated, they can, um, calls for service, and they'll do follow-up, too.
Thank you.
Will, will there be several people who are providing the service so that they're like on-call a certain day, or how does this work?
Not initially. Um, so, we'll have one co-responder. Um, hopefully, it's super successful and the program can be expanded, but for now, it'll just be the one person.
And then we got a hundred, I take it we got about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, and is that for a year? And if so, how many years this is for?
I think we're still working through the nuances of the budget and what the contract's gonna look like.
So, the, the grant is, you're correct, the grant award was a hundred and twenty-four thousand, a hundred and twenty-three, nine, twelve. Um, we're trying to define, um, because there's some indirect costs that we are gonna spend that money internally, where Health Solutions thought they were gonna spend it for radios and, um, earpieces and ballistic tests and everything. We're gonna, this clinician's gonna be geared up, um, for shaking and everything. So, we're trying to decipher that out. So, um, with that said, I, I think this would be good to add that I think the vote should be to authorize the mayor to sign it once staff, uh, clears up the numbers. I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward. Now, like I said, it, uh, the contract amount is gonna be over the hundred thousand threshold that the city manager, manager is allowed to sign off on, so.
By Friday.
By Friday.
By Friday.
So, I think this is a great idea. Are you kidding?
I have one question. I'm just, just trying to understand what you're saying. So, we have a city manager that the former city manager signed off on this already. So, are we ratifying that, or?
No, he signed off on the grant award. Now, we're contracting with Health Solutions. They're ready to hire this person to work with us. So, yes.
That's it.
Keep us on track. Seriously. So, it's always been my understanding that we don't have any mental health, uh, resources in this community. So, Health Solutions is a mental health... I don't love it.
Provider for Los Angeles County? They are. I think that their services over the years have probably dwindled a little. And I think this program starts to bring some of those services back.
Okay. Would they hire for within that organization for this position?
That's a potential, but the current applicant that they have, um, is not from somebody who's currently working at Health Solutions.
Okay. Got it. I think this is great.
Just, just one more comment, Mayor.
No.
If I may. Uh, and I think it's, it's more of putting it into the public record, because just to say plainly, I really appreciate that, um, under source of funds, uh, Trinidad, Colorado is not labeled. I mean, it's entirely funded from alternative sources. So, this is not affecting our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Call the vote, please. Shu?
Yes.
Debona?
Yes.
Trillo?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grago? Yes. Item nine C, consideration of providing grant match funds in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars for a feasibility study for BUBA automated transportation. Who will present it?
Actually, I guess I will, Mayor. Um, the reason this is on the agenda, I guess there was ongoing discussions with the BUBA representative. Um, previous city manager had communications, and they're included in your packet with the state, uh, required state support. There was nothing, um, coming back from the state in support of this. Uh, BUBA has been contacting staff members, mayor, me, trying to get us to push forward with that. One of the reasons was the September thirtieth deadline for this two million dollar feasibility study. Um, I tried to explain it as best as possible, um, maybe not good enough, because I know Facebook blew up and... So, I, at this time, I don't think we have enough to move forward. We're gonna try and prioritize projects as we go forward. So, this kind of, what I need is a direction from council and, um, a vote, whether we move forward with this or not. Uh, as far as the four hundred thousand dollar matching funds, I don't see that as a, uh, feasible time with where we're at in the budget. But anyway, uh, again, the background, like I said, I don't have a lot. You probably have more than me. So, that's, that's where we're at. Um, we just wanna have a council determination and, um, so we can tell this, uh, gentleman that at this time, it's not feasible.
Did you read this email that he sent later today?
I do.
Okay, he's asking if we can't do anything, do a letter of support.
Right.
But anyway, just so it's on the record, it's just too bad that the people that comment on social media aren't here to listen to the truth and the facts behind this. Um, it started out as a novel idea. I don't know how many of you were on council when he presented. Okay. But he came to us with the idea that if he could be successful with this project, that he could bring a ninety-eight million dollar project to the city of Trinidad. I think, and I'm speaking for the rest of council, I think all of us understood that it was a, it's a, it was a very low, uh, percentage of success on this. But you never turn your back on ninety-eight million dollars. Have to spend a little bit of time to understand what the project is. And, you know, uh, and I, I hate to give any kind of credence to social media, but it was never our intent to put BUBA down Main Street or in the historic area. But there were some uses for it that might be practical, such as from somewhere, uh, on Main, West Main Street up to Fisher's Peak or closer to the Fisher's Peak State Park. But we knew going into it that it was a lot of discussion and, but I think it's, city council did their due diligence by speaking to the man, listening to his, his plans, and then decide if it's something that we wanna go forward with. So, that being said, uh, everybody on this stage knows that we are not gonna spend four hundred thousand dollars on a project that might never come to fruition, or even if it does, we don't have that money to spend on something like this. So, I hope that people in town will learn to respect us more and to, and to have more faith in our judgment and that we take this job very seriously and that we're not that reckless to do something like that. And I guess while I'm speaking, you know, all, there were like forty-seven comments on, on this subject on social media. I did not get one call from anybody that asked me, hey, give me the facts regarding this. Not one. So, you know, I know I'm, my little pirate isn't gonna do any good because people will continue with some of the outrageous comments on social media, but, you know, if you wanna know the truth, come to the source. I mean, you know, I'm sure all of us, our emails are out there. Everybody knows where most of us are at, most of the time. Colin, ask us before you start. Because this kind of press does nothing good for this community. It's very detrimental. And if, if people have any faith in the people that sit up in these chairs and administration of the city, if they had any faith in us before, what these people said on social media pretty much destroyed that. And it's, it's very hard to get that back, to get that faith in our responsibilities and our, you know, um, our, I guess, our abilities to make the right decision. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. So, that being said, do I have a motion?
Um, I just, I'm gonna make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Um, I think it's important to note just very quickly, um, I, I re-watched the work session where, uh, we first learned of BUBA. And, uh, at the time, there was a lot of, uh, positives presented. It, it was an exceptionally large-scale, um, undertaking. If on the, as you mentioned, the off-chance it was successful, it would have been a boon for Trinidad. And we would have had to look at the operational costs absolutely to see if Trinidad could sustain that. But, um, you know, n- nothing ventured, nothing gained. But to that end, it, it isn't economically viable. And as you mentioned, no, none of us up here would hazard four hundred thousand dollars for this. And as you mentioned, none of us up here would hazard $400,000 for this when it was pitched to council as a 100% funded by grant with zero match. And even the administrative side was to be covered by BUBA. So, you know, we were presented with a sneak ola. And it turned out to be that unfortunately. But at the time, there was not a way to know that. So, I did want to say that I rewatched the work session. I don't think any missteps were taken. And obviously, at this point in time now, when it's going to cost real dollars, it's the point to, you know, cut bait. So, I wanted to mention that.
And do you have any?
No, I haven't looked at it. It's pretty much been summed up all the way across the board.
Just a big echo there instead, not to mention the extensive and expensive infrastructure modifications that you'd have to have later on. I mean, it's just, no.
I wasn't present at that work session. I was out of town and I watched it later and I was kind of puzzled about the whole thing. But it was my understanding, as you said, that it was just being presented to us as this could be a real boon to Trinidad. It wouldn't cost Trinidad anything. And I was a little shocked when I saw this. And also with the kind of attitude that I felt like we were getting from him, like, you know, do this.
Do this, really?
It's like, well, no. So, I just think, you know.
Well, Pueblo was supposed to be a private city two years ago. And nothing happened. And if I may, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to advocate, and if it's applicable under the agenda item, I would advocate that we don't even write a letter of endorsement for this. I mean, to be honest, that's my stance.
I refer to Mr. Downs. How do we do that?
Well, I think we can get direction from all of you. We can, you know, kind of ask you individually what your sentiments are. I would hate to have kind of an impromptu decision be made right about that. But I hear you, Councilman Williamson. And I think we can get the sentiments from each one of you regarding that. You know, we can call or otherwise get your feelings on that. I'm guessing there's probably a similar sentiment to Councilman Williamson, especially because it was presented to you, like everyone said, with no money necessary from the city of Trinidad and then a $400,000 kind of urgent, not urgent, but match ask. And so, that doesn't really leave a bitter taste in everyone's mouth. So, how do we follow up? You can let us know. We can publicly let, you know, well, we can let the public know, maybe the next meeting, what your sentiment was on whether or not to write a letter of recommendation for this. Would that be okay?
Mr. Downs, can we just do a consensus?
You can just, you can, you can.
I just don't know what I would say honestly. I mean, it was an intriguing idea.
Right. And it, right. And you would have heard about if you were at that work session, right? Other, and everyone else feels similarly?
Against the idea or against the letter of support?
Oh, I don't, no, no support for me.
No, neither.
None here? No.
I agree.
And we have a winner. I mean, we're losing. You don't have to do that by front.
Well, you know, and I have to apologize to staff as well because I didn't realize that Mr. Mueller was using our staff to get some information. And you know, that's what really changed my mind about this project in addition to the $400,000. Our staff is pretty stretched as it is. And if we write the letter, that means that Mr. Mueller will want our staff to give him more information. And I think Mr. Justin, his staff needs to work better on other projects that are more vital to the community. Okay, so on 9C, do I have a motion?
We don't even need a motion.
No, well, it dies.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, sir, lack of a motion.
It dies for lack of a motion. Correct, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I will get this when we're together. Okay. Item 10, reports by city manager and city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Our next work session on the 23rd, I believe it is, we're going to have a few special, we're going to have a special meeting along with that. There's going to be a few agenda items of ongoing discussion that has to be done by Friday. I mean, that's on September 30th. September 30th is a deadline for a lot of things. So, we're going to bring a few things forward to get council approval to move forward. And that'll be probably after the work session as Mr. Yearman will be involved with that. And he's got other things going on. So, I'd like to have the work session first and then the special meeting with planning agenda items toward the end. And we'll get that to you.
And will that be at the community center as well? I really liked that work session. I don't know.
Well, that was one of my items. That's all right. I got a little bit of feedback both ways. So, it was council's pleasure, I guess, if you could get that to me. We'll see if we set it up there. The idea is to have not this feeling of you up there, us against them, you know, kind of a thing. To get us all in a work session with the special meeting, that'll be different. That's a different environment. So, let's counsel.
What did you know, Friday? I'm sorry.
I think we're going to weigh in on this. I think there is a lot of value to having a work session where we're all at the same level. I really do. I think it kind of depends on what the work session's about, especially when we're meeting with a board of people or something like that. It's, I think, easier to do that. So, I don't know about every single work session, but I think based on how we think it will go, how many people are going to be involved in the discussions, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Do you know?
I don't.
No.
Frank?
Does the special meetings have, do we have to leave the room for the special meeting?
No, that was an executive session that we didn't have.
But I mean, are we, the special meeting would be just with the work system itself, right?
It would be right after the work session where the mayor opens meeting, we have official action.
Okay.
And if we're going to, sir?
We are. I'm always glad to have. Oh, my.
Can I agree with Aaron, Councilman Ogobtree? So, I like the idea of if it's something like she said, there's certain situations it needs to be here, which is fine, like to set up in here. But I kind of like the change of venue around. You know, we have other buildings we can utilize, you know, as well too. And that kind of draws attention and our public out to our venues. You know, that kind of brings them out there if they're willing to come and sit and kind of participate. But I do agree with the fact that if it's somebody that has to prove, like major present to us, then I think this is the right venue and the right atmosphere. And I think that's just up to someone's discretion. Cool.
So, I'll try and be brief.
No, you won't.
I will. I do think there's certain work sessions that would lend themselves to this room. And I think those are fairly self-evident in the sense of maybe, I can take that discussion with you offline, Michael, but like primarily, I really do think the work session, it's a good atmosphere at the community center because it promotes an attitude of cooperation, exchange, free and open exchange of ideas. And I think it just fosters and promotes a attitude of, you know, camaraderie that will get to that common goal faster. That's my opinion. Primarily, I'd like to see work sessions in that environment. And obviously, we have some deadlines that are necessitating having the additional meeting. And that becomes a little convoluted. But it's a small obstacle, I would think. That's my input.
Well, I'm on man out because I understand that this might be a barrier, the DA's might be a barrier to people that are down there for a work session. But I think it would be a whole lot easier if we just reconfigured this room, sat down there and had our work sessions. Because from what I'm understanding from you all, there's going to be some work sessions that will be better at the community center and there were some that would be better here. And I think you're complicating things more than it should. And we have the electronic equipment we need here. We have the office machines we need here if they're needed. We have staff here that we need if they're needed. And I think if this is the only area, I'd be more than happy to sit down there. But I don't think we need, well, this work session's going to be at the community center. And this one's going to be at City Hall because logistically, it doesn't make any sense to have the work sessions at the community center. And I'm not going to tell you, I got a complaint about it because there's some people that weren't happy that you guys were there.
That what?
That the meeting was there because it kind of disrupted the flow of the community center.
Oh.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that input and we'll take that into consideration. The mayor mentioned that the council agreed to have a joint work session with the county. And the county has sent out an email. And there's a lot of people included, but city council was not, the mayor was, and I was. So, we're going to try and clear that up. But they want to have a work session to discuss that pipeline in the white paper for the pipeline that crosses Pinon Canyon Maneuver Site. They sent out available dates of October 8th, the 22nd, the 29th at 10:00 a.m. at the commissioners' chambers. Well, before we could even answer, Congressman Lamborn is good for October 8th. Dee McNutt from the Army says October 8th works. Kathy Garcia from Lauren Volbert's office says the 8th works for her. So, I'm hoping that October 8th at 10 o'clock works for city council. And I'll respond and actually get this forward, that out to you, forward, sent out to you so that you can, so you can see that what the correspondence is. What was that again?
That is a joint work session.
Joint work session with the county, but the county is kind of meeting with the Army. And we'll work that out. But yeah.
Here are there.
What's that?
Here are there.
Over at the county chambers. They're hosting it, yeah.
10.
It's a Tuesday.
Yes.
No, I just, Tuesday in the mornings, I have to rearrange my entire schedule.
I'm sorry.
And will we have council after that?
No, that's just a joint work session with.
So, they can present everyone, and you wanted to be on council, so don't.
Wow. A story tells things for you. Work sessions are on Mondays.
Oh, no. So, that's all right. So, just so you, you don't have enough meetings. It looks like October 1st is our regular city council meeting. October 7th is our work session. And then October 8th is that work session.
Okay.
If you don't have enough meetings.
Yeah.
City manager, the RFPs, the deadline came and we had 10 proposals for the city manager, 11 for the police chief. So, staff is reviewing and will come forward with that. Just so I might say more sooner than later.
No, that's supposed to come in to do the search.
Do the search, correct. And then there was mention of LEA, just to let you know. We're moving forward, design, it's close. Like everything, what was budgeted for two years ago is not going to be enough. But staff is working toward that and we'll be talking about that. So, that's all I have for my sort of questions.
Mike, if I may ask a question? On LEA, Mike, is there any obstacles that are needing to be overcome? Such as the adjacent property owners?
Not at this time. The staff has been working through it. They have worked through it and were.
That'll just be, that'll be really nice to see it come to fruition.
Yeah.
Does LEA, I'm sorry, does LEA stand to the back of JC, the old J.C. Penney building?
No, that's private property.
That's private.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So, the first thing I want to tell you is, you may recall from last year, we were talking about the Natural Medicine Act. That is, it was an act of the state legislature that basically legalized mushrooms. Anyways, so I was bringing that before you a year ago. I was a year early. Well, it's now a year later. And by 2025, we have to have an ordinance in place regulating time, manner, and place restrictions. Communities are not allowed to opt out, municipalities are not allowed to opt out of the sale of mushrooms. I know that's, I know, I know. We're not allowed, I said this a year ago, it didn't seem.
I was surprised you knew as well.
We're not allowed to opt out. So, we'll be having additional conversations about this. But I want to let you know, and all Colorado municipalities are having to deal with this right now. And there are a lot of proposed ordinances I will be getting for your review when we have this conversation. But it's going to be interesting because really, all a municipality can do is implement time, manner, and place restrictions on the sale of natural medicine, including psilocybin mushrooms. The only other thing I wanted to mention to you all was that I had my last docket day as the municipal court prosecutor yesterday. And the reason I tell you that is because 60 days is coming up soon. And I just want to let you know that. So, but I'm not going anywhere. I'm not saying anything. I'm just saying the 60 days after I resigned is going to be up soon. So, I'm available. I'm not leaving. I'm not doing anything. You know, I just want to bring to your attention that 60 days is going to be up soon. So.
My question to you is, does that mean that you're going to continue doing city cases until there's an end date or beyond that date or?
What happened is Pam Nelson, Judge Nelson, decided to not have a docket day in October. And they have another lawyer, I believe, to fill in in municipal court, a Pueblo lawyer, a guy by the name of Stephen Talbot. And he's willing to do it. Now, I have not been privy to these conversations, but I think he's willing to do it for the very old reign of like $150 an hour, which is what the city used to pay back before. I think even Jared Bany, who was my predecessor. Bany, who was my predecessor. Anyway, but they have Mr. Talbot. I don't know without arrangements, but I think that's what it is. And I believe he's going to be beginning in the, in November.
Isn't that Art Cole, who is our city attorney? I mean, I don't understand how that works.
It's my understanding that they hired Mr. Talbot, at least on it. It's a good question. I'm probably, well, I think uni court did. And I'm kind of stinking out of school. I just heard this second hand. I don't want to get anyone in trouble.
No, no.
So, yeah, please. So I think in cases that have happened before where Wes had to recuse himself for various reasons, they use this term.
Correct.
And so now, uni court is like, okay, what's going to happen? So they contacted him just in case, I think. I don't know for sure. I will find that out. Just for councils' information, the app of the job ad was put out at CML and the listserv for attorneys. And that closes on September 27th. I've talked to Donna and she says today, we have nothing. So I know it's a council hire. And so we're going to have to have that discussion more sooner than later. So I'll let Wes continue.
Ken, I'm glad this is doing a good job.
No, I just wanted to get that out there. We're looking and for council.
And that's all I have. Now that I'm confused.
It doesn't seem right that they would make that decision.
I'll find that out.
Please.
I might have to wait that.
Which is all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 11 is adjournment, motion to adjourn.
Set.
Okay. Ogle?
Me and Frank.
Tabato?
Yes.
Shil?
Yes.
Chirnhill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Flayson?
Yes.
Rio.
See, I have FUBA for it.